Okay, it is 6:00 PM. I will call the special board meeting. Order. This time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Moment of silence. Roll call?
Roll call shows 11 supervisors present, four absent.
It's time I would seek a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Any members of the public wish to be heard? Then we will move on to reports. County Administrator review and update of the American Rescue. Brainstorming session.
Alright, good evening, everyone. So we'll start with the presentation and then kind of go from there. So the first thing, just to overview what we're gonna speak about tonight. I'll go through the presentation and obviously answer any questions at the end that I can, comments, and then brainstorming from the county board. So you guys probably didn't see this, but this is the introductory. The American Rescue Plan was 12.5 million for the county. We did receive our first amount in May 192021. And we will receive our second amount in May of 2022. We have 6.2 million in the bank, if you will, and then we're gonna give an additional 6.2 million. On May 10th, 2021, the Treasury issued the interim rule. Remember that, that was pretty much complete chaos in my world. They've put out supplemental guidance on how to interpret the rule, even before the final rule came out. And then on December, or on January 6th, the Treasury came out with the final rule. Really, the biggest change between the two, they had a lot, there's a lot of changes in it, but really, the biggest one is they exempt anybody receiving $10 million or less to be able to use as loss revenue. That was huge for a lot of municipalities. Obviously, we're at 12.6, and I'll show you, we're still gonna do a lost revenue calculation, but we will build a free up remaining of our money through that, those calculations. And then this is what's really required by March 3rd, 2021. If you had any expenditures, it started expenditures through December 31st, 2024. So we need to have our money spent, or we have to be under contract by December 31st, 2024, to allocate the funds. And then if we are under contract, we can go till December 31st, 2026. Then we've been showing this is just some categories that were put out early. This obviously was a big issue when we first received the interim rule, because nobody knew what could be spent and how it could be spent. So we spent quite a bit of time on this, and then we discovered we could do the revenue loss, which pretty much eliminated all this. So county board action, July 20th, 2021, county board meeting. Resolution 1921 to approve the county's, Chippewa County's American Rescue Plan guidelines and procedures for allocating the funds. And then that's also when you pass the three resolutions for the TELCOs. Then on February 8th, approved resolution 0422 to amend the guidelines, and we just completed that. We added that to the guidelines that you approved. January, or January 1st, 04, or January 1st, on the 4th, department heads submitted draft ideas to the county administrator for initial review. So 26 projects were submitted by the department heads, reviewed those. 13 of the projects met the requirements, qualified for ARPA funds. 13 of those projects either did not meet the ARPA requirements or moved to CIP projects instead. And that was really just communicating with the department heads to see what amount of work could get done for what was submitted. There's only so much work that facility and parks can do, so we kind of worked together to see what would have to get done on the ARPA and what could get pushed on the CIP. Again, the difference with CIP, you can spread that over time. So you have the opportunity to move those projects if you want to. But the ARPA funds obviously has a deadline, so that's really the big difference. So I, county minister held listening session municipalities, really, really great turnout. 25 municipality reps over there, five county board members were there. And really, the, we initially set that up because of the interim rule and trying to communicate what could and couldn't be, because towns were really struggling with that. We were struggling with it, so really thought that's what it was gonna be. And then like a few days before we put that out, they came out with a final rule that said you can exempt $10 million and use lost revenue, which every municipality in our, in our county qualified for. So it kind of changed the conversation, but we really didn't want to cancel the meeting, because I think it's always good when you can get together and talk, and especially with something this big. Kind of turned into if you have projects that involve highways, peace contact, Brian, so you can coordinate that with them, because a lot of times we'll have roads that go through municipality, and we're responsible for part of that road, they're responsible for part of that. And then it also, we also gave them an opportunity to talk about the infrastructure bill that came out at the time, too. Fortunately, we'll cover that a little bit in here, but there's not a lot of information out there about that. So there were some questions that came up about that. That was really good. Then 27, or yeah, 217 to 218, so Health and Human Services Board have not met yet. And there's a project on this spreadsheet that talks about that, and the same thing with land conservation, forest management. And I'll touch on those a little bit as we move forward. And then obviously, 215 is the county board brainstorm session. No official action taken, just information gathering. And then as we move on, broadband projects. We wanted to show what that percentage was, how much we've allocated so far. 1.7 million, and that's about 13.6% of our total allocation, so it's a pretty big chunk of change. I did go to a meeting with Charlie Walker and the TELCOs to get kind of an update where they are. They're kind of in different states, obviously, of getting things done, but Blumer Telephone did, they are putting in for the next round, and they're gonna ask us for $1.8 million for that. So that's probably not gonna happen. As you can see, we got it, we'll have that discussion, probably be part of the brainstorm, I assume. But, so we're currently working with the broadband companies. We do have one agreement completely done, so we kind of got a plate that will work for the other two, and we'll keep on working through that process. But very anxious, they're excited, fired up to get the cable on the ground, so they're moving on with that. And like I said, I've had another one contact me, but they didn't say what the ask would be, if they, if you guys are willing. So really, county board, and I think we do have to bring this up during our brain session. Is there any, you know, do you want to put any more money through, or to the TELCOs for broadband or not? And if you do, kind of, what's your number or what's your thought? Again, I think 13.6% is a pretty good, pretty good offering for them. And I did tell them that, but I did say if, you know, if I hear anything different from the board, I would get back in touch with them.
You want to take questions on that now, or at the end?
Can I go?
Okay, alright.
Because I gotta go through the whole list of things, if that's okay. So revenue loss, we just wanted to show how that's calculated. You can see, we take the total amount, the 12 million, 12.5, reduce the 1.7 that we already gave to broadband, so we really only have to come up with 10.8 as far as revenue loss. And they built in a revenue loss number of 4.1% automatically across the board, regardless of what your revenue loss was, you could implement the 4.1%. And that compounded, so for 2020, it was 4.1, 2021, it'd be 4.2. The final plan actually upped that to 5.2, so it's even, we're positive that we're gonna be able to free up all that money. But the 4.1% for 2020, it freed up 5.7 million. Obviously, over the next three years, upping that to 5.2%, will definitely free up that remaining 5 million, a little under $5 million. So, you know, one of the things we've been thinking about going through this process is when we saw what was submitted, is there's a lot of projects on here. There's a lot of facility and parks, that, I mean, you guys can decide at the end of the day, obviously, what you want to do and not do. There's also highway projects on there, and they never come in on the dollar. It just never happens, it can't happen. So we feel like we need to build in a contingency of between 10 and 15%. So we have that money available for us when those projects come in. They come in over budget, we'd have ARPA funds to fund that. But we also feel like by March of 2024, if we know that there's projects that will not be completed, and the contingency money, we have to, county board's gonna have to reallocate those funds somewhere. We think it's probably easiest at highway. We talked to Brian about just make sure you got things in the queue if we need to spend money. It's probably the easiest way to do it, but you guys may come up with other ideas for that. But that's kind of the big picture plan right now. And then obviously, I'll have to bring that forward. So I'm gonna go through this and go through the next sheet, and then I'm actually gonna have Tim come up and explain one of the things for human services after I get done with that. And Tracy's gonna put up a better PowerPoint picture that you can actually see it a little clearer, so. So this is just a point in time. This is part of the process. We're on step three of seven. This is not my list, this is not what I'm recommending. This is just where we are. We asked the department heads to submit things to their committee following the requirements that the county board passed. And I'll just remind you of what those are. So when we sent this out to the department heads, we told them this is the criteria you have to follow, submit your projects accordingly. So what you passed in the plan was, number one, was the funds may be allocated for projects that will or could reduce future operation costs. The funds may be allocated for projects that are currently in the Chippewa County Five Year Capital Improvement Plan, or projects that are similar. Funds may be allocated for projects that will promote future economic growth in Chippewa County. And then the fourth one, funds should never be allocated in a way that will increase future operation costs. So that's what we put out to our department heads, asked them to put, you know, plans together. And then I'll just go through this list of what they are. And again, I'll go through both of them, then come back to have Tim come up and talk about the one. So obviously, the top three has already been allocated, so those are the TELCOs. And then the first one, and the reason I, I put this first is, depending on what you approve, you may not approve anything facility and parks, and the first one would go away. But right now, if these projects stay on here, talking with Larry, they'd never have the capacity from staff in order to do all these projects. So this person would be hired to offset some of the work, so some of the managers could actually get the projects done. So that, that's why I had that first, because if anything changes, that, that ask will change for sure. And then just going down the list, it pretty much explained themselves. But hand-free plumbing fixtures at the courthouse, that's in all the bathrooms. Replace domestic water piping in 1951 courthouse. County room board expansion, playgrounds, some of this stuff is in the parks, obviously. Pine Point, Outer Lake, and Ron Lake, a little place camp. Camps like docks, add new mini marina, add new fishing docks. And then add the automatic fire dispenser for Pine Point, Outer Lake, and Morris Kirkson. And next one, replace picnic tables. Then highway, we just, we have $5 million allocated towards that. Human services, again, I'll have Tim come up here, but Fisher Shipman does work for this company, so just so you're aware of that. And Tim's gonna come up and explain when we get done, why this company is the only one that can really provide this service for what they're trying to do. And then land conservation forest management, it's a million dollars for Lake Wissota Conservation Project. The committee hasn't even, the last two, the human services in the LCFM, committee hasn't even had a chance to weigh in on these, so they're gonna have to do that before our next meeting. They meet tomorrow and then on Thursday. I don't really have a whole lot for land conservation forest management projects, so they'll have to really vet that out at that meeting. And then these are some of the things that came forward. Either didn't qualify, or we found things that we could fund them different ways. So child support, there's a laser fish update that will help them be more efficient, a pretty low cost, and we found a way to allocate funds for that. Project manager for Take a Stand Against Mess really doesn't qualify. The qualifications under the lost revenues, it has to be a county service. It's really not a county service. The way WCA explained it to us, if you put tax levy towards it in the past, it's probably a good indication that you can do it in the future or for this, but if you haven't, they'd be cautious. You'd have to do a deeper dive to see if you can do that, so really, I don't feel like that qualifies. Digital auto recording clerk, or the judges wanted to pull that, and I know the state's working on that, so we just pulled it completely. I don't know if we have to do that or not. County clerk found some funds available for able to do that. Backup machines for her. DA, there was a lot of stuff in the DA's request that was either state stuff or things that we could look at in maintenance and fix, so we felt like we could take care of most of that. And then this facility and parks, all these, we took those off because there's just no way they'd be able to complete them in the timeframe that's required. And then land conservation forest management, they had half a million dollars for the Ice Age Trail. We've never put money towards the Ice Age Trail, we never put levy towards that. So I don't feel like that qualifies as a project. Public health, again, that has to do with facility and parks, it's a remodel. And then we talked to the, the sheriff actually put the jail conference room in the 911 in both ARPA and CIP. So we just talked to him and we built, put that in CIP. We thought that was a better way to do it. And then just before I have Tim come up and talk about that, we just wanted to show some other funding opportunities. Obviously, we got the Five Year Capital Improvement Plan, which they're starting, we're starting to work through that also. Big thing with that is, again, and I've said this from the beginning, is we can't put too many projects on facilities, because they just won't be able to get them done. So that's really the big, the big concern there. Bonding, we gotta come through with bonding 2022, 2023. We have a long-term plan, financing plan for bonding, that's been presented in front of you guys several times, and we'll continue to look at that. And then really, the bipartisan infrastructure law. That is coming forward 1.29 trillion, or billion. And we don't know exactly what that looks like. Obviously, Brian's been working on that. There is something that's happened pretty quickly, that Brian's jumped all over, that there's a first round of funding coming out, that they have to get plans together, so he's, he's all over that. But all the rest of that's gonna roll out, if it's gonna be just part of the regular plan, if it's gonna be all that, I don't think we have a lot of details on that yet. And then here's kind of our next steps, and that kind of goes the dates. I think someone asked previously about the next steps that are in the plan. Like I said, we're in step three of seven currently. Flip my page. So county board brainstorming, obviously, tonight. Department heads submit committee approval projects to me, I'm 225. And then as we move through, you're gonna have several opportunities, obviously, the way back into this. We're gonna have another special county board meeting, don't forget that, next week, on Tuesday, to continue our conversation on this. Then county board meetings, county board orientation, we'll provide ARPA overview and let the new board know exactly where we're at, and all the work we put into it so far. Then county minister presents draft plan to the executive committee. And then as we move, you can kind of see the dates as we move through it. So it finally would be done in July. Go through executive committee on the 5th, and then the county board on the 12th, is the plan. And then we have to post that out, and out on our website, so everybody can see that. So before you guys ask any question, I'm gonna ask Tim to come up here and talk about this program for DHS, so you guys have a better understanding of that.
Good evening, everybody. We always like to start off, well, we don't always start off, but I'm gonna start off with a little good news. Just a little news that came into the house. This is for you, Buck, when we talked about the last child in the human services meeting. But there's some legislation up foot that would potentially make crisis services fully funded as part of the state, which should be really big, be huge for Chippewa, where we could end up potentially saving $300,000. So WIX is gonna be starting to draft a white paper on that, we're getting dadded together. So there's a movement afoot to get that moving, and it sounds like there is some funding available for that. So, good news, at least some hope. And another item, speaking about some hope here, is why I'm talking about this program. As we all know, children's out of home, we've been talking about this for years, since 2015. This is, this is really gotten, gotten huge. Methamphetamine out of home placements. I ended up taking a fourth child, a young man, to Utah last week, on Wednesday and Thursday for placement in Utah. We had ended up looking for over 70 places, denials, before this place finally ended up taking him. And the level of care for this young man, this is an individual, we had him in Boys Town, and he ended up getting kicked out of Boys Town for attacking staff, biting them, and then they ended up with over 20 stitches. So these are the kinds of individuals sometimes that we have to deal with. And he suffered a lot of trauma as a kiddo. And this is what, what we're talking about in this program. So I want to provide a little history, too, as far as this goes. So probably about four years ago, we started seeing this issue occurring, and I started asking around the state about programs that could potentially impact out-of-home care placements. And I started hearing about ANEW, and I started hearing about intensive permanency services, IPS. So this program was run in several counties. I had talked to individuals in Waukesha, Outagami, and Wapaka that had utilized the services. They said it was phenomenal, it prevented a lot of out-of-home placements, but it was very expensive. So as time went on, we eventually had a meeting with the CEO, with Michelle, and I'm not sure if there was another individual with her, and we wanted to talk about Level 5 Treatment Foster Homes, as well as this, because we were thinking potentially that would help us out with the out-of-home placements. But as we start, got to talking about this more and more, we started talking about the intensive permanency services program. And then we got down to the bottom line, and we started talking about costs, and it was like, yeah, it's a great program, but we're not gonna be able to afford anything like this at this point. So bump ahead about four years, and it's the summer of 2021, and we hear about these ARPA funds, and Randy talks about, he showed us some of the criteria, and one of the criteria was child welfare programs that can improve outcomes. So then we reconnected, and we started talking about IPS and how it could serve kids and reduce our out-of-home placement cost in Chippewa County. And we have been contracted with ANEW for parent coaching. 2015-ish, right in there, for, that's when CCS, it could have even been before that, but when comprehensive community services came into existence, I know we have been contracted with them. I had not heard of any other agencies, I always have my ear out on folks that are working with this type, this type of population that could potentially impact replacement. So we start talking about the intensive permanency services program. Seemed like the way to go, and eventually, we came to the decision that this probably wouldn't be the way to go, because this is one worker working with up to each children at a time. So, and right now, in this market, as far as the market goes, it's really hard finding qualified staff. And if you have one person leaving, I've talked about it before with our CPS staff, if we have one initial area intake IE worker or ongoing worker goes, probably approximately a $55,000 impact on, on that, on a case. Just because it takes that much longer for the new worker to come in, start getting familiar with that family. Reunification is likely to occur in one year if you have one worker. It starts dropping significantly as you add workers on, as you change workers. So with that in mind, we started looking at really, what are some of the issues in Chippewa County that we're seeing? And what we're seeing is kids that can't be maintained at these lower-level placements, at county-level placements. The foster parents find themselves ill-equipped. We do do training, you know, we provide some training, it's very basic. It's not a trauma-informed approach. And I'm gonna tell you is that, is that our foster care coordinator, Abby Schmazl, she, for years, we had an LTE, we finally got the full-time foster care coordinator, and her time is spent essentially on recruitment of new foster homes, licensing of new homes, and relicensing our existing homes. Because right now, we have 61 foster homes at this point, and they're all pretty much full. So one of the things, as we, as we discuss this program, we thought about how can we better support our foster families at this level, so we're not having kids blowing out of placements. We have kids, we have foster fam, or kids that'll go through three, four, five placements, and then we run out of county foster homes, and then we start going to the treatment foster care homes, where we're paying substantially more, we're paying upwards of $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. And then we start looking at the group homes, which now, even though we have the, the state developed a qualified residential treatment programs in an effort to improve quality, but what happened is that our cost for one of our group homes here went up $100 per day as a result of that, because now they have to have medical staff on their team. So, how can we better support these kids at that lower level? And that's, that's the program that we started looking at, and started, started designing, and kind of based on the parent coaching as well. And that's why we came up with the intensive, comprehensive, I should say, foster care support services. And I don't know if we wanted to go into much detail on the actual services, or do folks want to hear a little bit more about the program itself?
You want to do this, Randy, with each one, say?
If you got questions, I mean, I think you've explained.
How we got where we're at? Because we're gonna go through the Health and Human Services Board, and we'll probably be coming back with more. The whole thing is about supporting our foster families. It's about providing training upfront that they're not getting. It's about training our staff, it's about everybody speaking the same language. Then it's about providing that ongoing training, and it's also providing that, that one-on-one support. What happens after, a lot of this stuff that we see, these crisis things happen after 4:30, they're not happening from 8 to 4:30. So at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, instead of calling crisis services, how about we call the parent coach? Who knows his family, knows his child, and is working with them, and can troubleshoot some things, and can support their family. Our foster families feel like they're out on an island. Adoptive families feel like they're out on an island sometimes as well with these special adoption, when you're dealing with these, these extreme behaviors. And that's what we want to be able to provide with this, is provide that, that ongoing support and training to these families.
I guess one thing, Tim, me and you talked about, you talked, when we talked this over, you talked about continuation of services and care, like you can't split this, this company with another company, because you're losing all that.
Be dedicated staff, that's all, and be speaking the same language, then understand the program. That's what I like about, like Boys Town. When you send a child there, they have everything from the psych hospital to the more of a group home level of care, to the treatment foster care level of care, foster care. And everybody's speaking the same language. And when we do have kids go to a place like that, we have better outcomes. And that's what I'm talking about, is that we need, we need a dedicated team that's all speaking the same language and is all working together. And what we want to be able to do is track these outcomes and goals, to show that they're working. That, that's, that's, to me, that is one of the critical things that we need to do, is track these outcomes, and show that we're doing what's working.
I guess the only thing else I'd add is our hope.
Yeah, I guess the only thing else I'd add is our hope is that by doing this, we do reduce our out of home placement cost. So we do, then five, 2026, we do free up enough money that we can continue with the service. That'd be ideal because now you're proactive, you're stopping the children from having additional ACEs that we've talked about in the past. And then we're not having to go through this long process of them being in foster homes outside the, you know, a lot of them are outside of our state.
And if we are looking at reunification, it's also working with those parents in, in, in concert with the foster parents and providing them that structure. Because what happens a lot of times is we've got kids that go away to treatment foster, or to treatment centers and they come home and the dance starts again. The parents haven't changed at all. The kids have changed, they're ready to come home and, and folks start doing the same dance pretty soon before we go. They're accessing Crisis, the kid's back in care, and we want to try and prevent that.
Randy, do we have the board asked? Yeah, okay. Charlie, go ahead.
The strings attached to this ARPA is that you're, you're not to create a continuous operational cost. So how do you get away from that? Because this is going to be continuing. This isn't going to be a one.
The contract would end in 2026.
And then what would happen? Because that's such, it's a very worthy cause, but then what happens after that?
At that point, we, we are, we would, we would actually have to stop at that point if we don't have the funding. And if it's, and if it's not working, we're not going to want to continue the program. But if it is working, we're going to free up the funds that we're going to be able to pay for the service to continue. And we're probably not going to need it on such a large-scale basis as well. Because we're not going to have the number of kids in foster care because that has been reduced. So we're going to be able to focus on those reduced number of kids, some of those more, those serious, serious cases.
Yeah, we could be on our contract up 2026. Like I was saying, the hope is by doing this, it does reduce our home costs because that is on our levy. And if we can do that, and by 2026, if we're free of enough money, we can continue the service. If we can't, then we can't do it and we're, we're, but if we don't do something, we're going to keep on, I mean, we're going to be several hundred thousand dollars over budget again this year. And there's, we, I mean, Tim knows there's nothing else out there. So not doing anything, it's just not my nature. I think we have to try and solve this problem and it's the best thing I've heard ever, I mean, since I've been involved in this line of work, so.
We've got the, we've got the, the chance to make a difference. This is the first time I've really had some hope as far as that, we're going to make a difference. We keep looking down, we're going to see less kids. Maybe methamphetamine's going to start, you know, it's going to start really slowing down, which is not seen.
Well, you can see the results. We can, we can track the results.
Correct. And like I said, and if it's not working by the end of this time, we wouldn't continue with it anyways. And I suspect by year two, the completion of year two, we're going to be seeing some benefits.
Any other questions? Supervisor Steele?
Program itself. You guys didn't think up the program and then look for a vendor, the vendor approached you, right?
We approached them.
You approached?
Because we knew about the IPS program, the intensive permanency services program.
Correct.
That was already in existence because I had heard about it from other counties how it worked.
I, I look at it this way. We have a procedure and we've been keeping by the procedure pretty good. All the money's estimated, but this one here is right down to the dollar before it even gets to us.
Yeah, so we asked our department heads, Larry did the same thing. He did research on the cost. We want that to nail down as much as we can before you guys see it because otherwise if we put nothing down there, you're going to ask how much it is. We'd say, I don't know, we're guessing it's $100,000 and it's $500,000. Not going to appreciate that. So we, all our projects are always done like that.
My other thing is, let's, let's get rid of the elephant. Okay, we have a county board supervisor that works for the company. In a court, in the court of public opinion, that's not going to fly.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you guys to decide. But I'd say we have a county board that's already, we're already providing service, they're already providing, that company's providing service to us already.
We contracted that for treatment foster care as well as.
I didn't know that until tonight.
Mr. Schmidt?
On Buck's comment, yeah, we have one county board supervisor working for the county, but we have 14 that do not. And she recuses herself because of the conflict. It shouldn't be an issue. It should be, that should be pretty plain for anybody looking at this situation that it, but it is what it is. We all have things that are potentially a conflict at some point in time. It shouldn't be a problem.
I'd just make one, one comment. Tim is correct. This is an issue that we struggle with for years. It's, what do we have? This is where these mandated positions came from, too, that we end up having is to try to handle these issues with the drugs and then.
CCS, well, some of.
Yeah, some of.
CCS helps with your dogs and the children.
This is like being stuck between a rock and a hard place because it's a service that we need. However, Mr. Steele brings up a good point because again, in that court of public opinion, we actually went to the vendor to design the program and get the cost. And while I have worked with this person and been really good in recusing herself to the, to the people, it basically looks at like that we designed this whole thing to fund that company. She's just one of the head people, if not the head person now. And so how do we get rid of that stigma? That's, I understand where Mr. Schmidt came from, but with the public, how do we get rid of that stigma? Somebody's got a magic wand to wave, let me know. But when we design the course and we go to the vendor, the person is on the board, it certainly looks like we're playing favorites. But I also understand what Tim is saying is that for the design program you put together, we don't have a whole lot of other choices.
These aren't like auto parts stores.
Yeah.
We've got 50 different auto parts dealers that we can go to. We're, we're very limited on.
So how do we convince the other 63,000-some people that this isn't? And that's the main question, that this is playing favorite. That's, like I say, if somebody's got a magic wand, I'm willing to listen, but stop and think about it. It's one of the issues that, you know, different counties bump into when you come into this stuff. There's not like we can bid it out or maybe there is some other things that we could bid out, but in this case, it's kind of cut and dried. Supervisor Steele?
I'm not, I'm not saying the program, I'm against the program. I think program has to be successful for everybody to, you know, gravitate that way. But when I first looked at that, I thought, geez, they wrote up a spec sheet of what they wanted and only one vendor could provide it. So in other words, you got the spec sheet down so tight that only one vendor could do that. And that's what's going to happen outside this room. In other words, when you, when, when you go to bid a project, you tell them what you want, what you need, what you got to have, and the timeframe and all that stuff, and then the vendor bids it. And it looks like we've sat down and discussed and took the whole package rather than parts of it or stuff like that. And, uh.
Thank you. I think Buck, you brought up that same situation. We were talking about the gun range and how they wanted to fix it. There was only one vendor involved and that's when we put a stop to it. We wanted to have choices. We wanted to have different opinions and different prices.
Yeah, I guess what I've talked with Tim and I don't know this stuff.
I don't know who else. We would.
I mean, they're already, they're already doing, providing the services. You can't go up to a point and then have another company come in and do the rest of the service. You got to have that same person doing continuation of care on a term, but continuation of coaching, continuation of that. So we would have done the same thing. It doesn't matter if county board member or not, we wouldn't have done anything different. We go out and get costs all the time from vendors, from, if there's only one vendor, there's only one vendor. We do have a sole source policy that says we can do a sole source if that's the people that have, can do the work. We got it with Johnson Controls and Facilities. It's not, not unusual.
So how long has this been going on and how long have you had a contract with Michelle's organization?
Thousand.
So it was waiting.
Oh, exactly.
Waiting for all this.
Fourteen.
Oh, yeah. Oh, correct. Yeah, they're already providing the service up to a certain point. This is kind of like the part we couldn't afford because we didn't have the funds available.
We've been contracted treatment foster care way before CCS, probably since ANEW was a company. So we've been doing that for quite some decades.
Just make one observation and that is the contract started long before she was a county board supervisor. And that was fine and dandy. Now, like I say, again, she is on the county board. I'm open to any suggestions because again, we've got the vast majority of this county to try to educate that this is not playing favorites. And I, I understand Tim where you're coming from. This is a very tough issue to tackle. There's not like we have a gas station around every corner. But on the other hand, we got all of us that are sitting here in this room, we're looking at elections and people are going to be asking questions, why? And it's not easy to say, well, it's the only game in town because they don't have the benefit unless, I would never want to direct all those people to call you, but because you might be inundated with phone calls. But the bottom line is this is not an easy fix for us.
If you're being transparent though, that's what you say.
Well, we have to be. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, we're being transparent, but 63,000 other people, are they going to understand?
I think Tim and I both would volunteer to take any phone calls. We got to explain stuff all the time to people. So if you get any phone calls on it, please, if I can't answer them, Tim can answer them. If they don't agree, they can let you know they don't agree.
Yes?
I would just like to say too, I, I agree with that this relationship has been established for many years, long before, and that maybe we need to educate the community more because there isn't a lot. I mean, this is crisis intervention, but there's not a lot of mental health for people in the community. Basically, a lot of people just unfortunately, the best place to get help, in my opinion, is in prison because that's when everyone's there to help out, which is not the best place for a person to get help and to be a healthy, pro-social community member because we don't have the funds for these kinds of community resources to help our citizens to be successful and be able to tackle these things because the money isn't there for it and it's far between and it gets really frustrating. Families, you know, social services and everything. And I don't think that should be one hangup because it shouldn't matter where you work. We're here for our citizens, not for our own personal aim or whatever, like. But anyway, it's been an established thing we've done for a long time. So why wouldn't we continue to work with a company we've been working with several years?
Just done.
At this point, we're not talking about a specific contract. We're talking about allocating a certain amount of money and, and the, the contract will happen down the road after we get past the allocation process. So I, I think we're probably getting a little ahead of ourselves as far as.
Yeah, Tim and I just really want to be transparent upfront. So that's, you know, we didn't, we're not hiding anything. Everything's out there. You guys know exactly what's going on.
Well.
Like I said, we never, we always want to be transparent on everything we do.
And this is the brainstorming. This is where things like Carrie's bringing in, this is the brainstorming. We try to get our heads around this thing. You know, I can't agree with Carrie more, what she said. It seems like when they get in prison, it's the only time we can get something done. But the, the, the other, you know, the other portion of this problem that comes into play is, so this, we have this ARPA funding now, so we've got a one-time shot. Then what happens? The fact of the matter is the state, federal government has got to start recognizing this program, this problem, and stepping up to the plate. We can't keep putting Band-Aids on. It's, uh, it's growing by leaps and bounds. My God, what did I hear? Yes, in this country? You know, it's, this drug issue, when people ask me what the biggest problem we have in Chippewa County, is it's the drug issue because it affects everybody. 85% of our law enforcement personnel are dealing with drugs. Our social services is being inundated with this issue. So while, again, this would be a Band-Aid, this is not even for like a vendor, this is not a good fix. It's nice to be able to put a program in place and see that program move through and keep moving. So anyway, things to think about.
At a higher level, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, looking at a higher level, if this works, this is going to be something that's going to impact the entire system. This is going to impact the entire state. This isn't just going to continue to affect Chippewa County. This is the opportunity for, for us to do something that is going to be for the greater good as well. This isn't just going to be Chippewa County. And we don't know yet those kids that we're saving. I always go back to the story, the Ten Boom family back in World War II. They say they helped save some of the families from, from execution in the death camps. And one of the Ten Boom descendants was getting ready for heart surgery when the doctor came up to him and said, hey, are you so-and-so? And he goes, yeah, your grandfather was the one who saved me from death in the camps. And that's what I look at is that, and I know, and I, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, but we never know what kid is going to be helping us out someday that we're going to save. Because I tell you what, the CPS system as we know it is the gateway to the adult prison system. It's, it's the gateway to the youth justice program and it's the gateway to the prison system. We had a presentation on that from a judge in Madison. He says, all those kids I see coming to CPS is Chip's kids. He goes, 15, 16, 17, 18 years later, I'm sentencing them as adults. We have the opportunity to make them pay. And I just hope we can find a way to do it.
Any other questions or thoughts? Again, this is a brainstorming session. Yes, Charlie?
I, I guess, you know, the program is really good and you're saying by 2026, you'll find out how well it did. But if it's such a good program and you're saying the state and other states will look towards this as a really good project, you're not ever going to be able to shut it down. So that, that the responsibility then is still going to fall on the county or will by then the state say it's such a good program? You'll be fined dancing in different places.
If it is working that well, like I said, it's going to reduce our out of home placements and it's going to free up a lot of funding. We're not going to have 161 kids in out of home care back then or going on to these higher level of care. The things that are really draining us right now are those out of state placements, are those rawhide placements, are tomorrow's children placements, are group homes that positive alternatives. We're going to be reducing that. So we're going to have the funding and like I said, we're not going to need the program on that large of, of scale as we do now because we're going to have less kids.
That's the whole.
That's the whole.
They know at the end of 2026, you know, it's done, so.
And I'll tell you, and it doesn't matter how good it is, it's done. Contract goes to 26.
There's a lot of things we can do if we have funding from A to Z in every department. So everybody knows we're limited, that's a limitation. But if we don't do this, we're never going to know if it's working or not. We're just going to continue to pour, pour more money and more. We're just gonna continue to pour more money and more money into it.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks a lot for your time, everybody. Get the moral decisions.
We're ready for the brainstorm session. Listen, comments, whatever you guys got?
Ms. Strauss?
I'll jump off. This past year, we talked a lot about groundwater and nitrates. Land Conservation Committee dealt with that the last two years that I've been involved with that. We have over $60,000 allocated toward Stevens Point doing a study, a repeat study of what we did in 2014. We subsidize nitrate in other water testing. So the county's really involved and quite far ahead in that area. What we don't have is a plan for what we're going to do after that study. Or the resources to do something. When it comes to nitrates, the largest source of that is our agricultural practices, which are hard to, hard to deal with, and they're a real challenge. And there's well, excuse me, there's septic systems that, gosh, we don't know exactly what to do there either. We also then have to deal with the people who have high nitrate levels in their wells right now. And may not have the wherewithal to put in a $600 to a $1,000 unit for reverse osmosis. I don't have a magic idea of what we should all do yet. That's something that the Land Conservation Committee needs to address and perhaps make a plan. But I think we should set aside at least some money for doing something rather than simply studying it most of the time. And Land Conservation Committee meets tomorrow. So I'm sure that's, you know, more details might come out at the next meeting that we have something to suggest. I wanna put that on the table as an idea that the county should address.
So clarifying question for Mr. Houser, or Supervisor Houser? Are you saying, are you looking for a program for providing reverse osmosis or individual wells that have high nitrates? Is that the concept, I guess?
That is one element that could be certainly addressed. And Rock County has put forth a proposal that they think is eligible for ARPA funding, targeting their highest nitrate level wells, 15 to 20, 25 nitrate levels. And then if they have too many of them, or they have more money than they have need, they might consider going down to the 10 to 15. But then you also have some means testing there. A lot of people have those wells treated already. So, but how effective are those? That's something that Stevens Point perhaps could help us study better. We won't know exactly what kind of problem we have until the Stevens Point study is completed. And that's probably gonna be at the end of 2022, maybe, maybe mid 2023. But by that time, we could throw together a plan that says, okay, this is where we're gonna allocate X amount of money for some of the solutions. Land conservation, the forest, not the forest, but the agriculture sector, crop management is probably the one intervention that can produce some change in the long run. Because this is a really long-run problem. It's not a short-term problem. So the crop practices that are mentioned, the Lake Wasota Stewardship Project, there's some cropping practices there that could come into play. There's also some testing where farmers can determine how much of the nitrate is actually being taken up by the root system versus leaching all the way through to the groundwater. And that will help them determine how much fertilizer to apply. Because they don't wanna waste fertilizer either.
Any other comments or questions on that particular issue for LCFH since we do meet tomorrow? I will just mention, Don, we're on the same wavelength. We were actually just talking about that today. Because one of the, one of the issues that's cropped up, and actually, our timing is, is really good. There's legislation now, it's, let's put it this way, the state of Wisconsin has finally recognized this issue. So now there's pending legislation coming forward. One of the things that we can do, and we can talk more about this tomorrow, is expand our testing. So the head toxicologist for the state lab of hygiene talked about nitrites, that there's free nitrate now showing up in the water, which didn't used to be. And so we could, we can talk about, so we could expand our testing, do nitrite testing. Because nitrite testing is much more expensive. You can do your nitrate test for 25 bucks. Nitrite is, add a couple more zeros to it. Because the nitrite is a thousand times more toxic than the nitrate. And it does the same thing. Because the nitrate, assume it in your body, it turns it to nitrite. So now if there's actually free-forming nitrite in these water systems, it's a very critical situation. So I think we're on the same wavelength there.
The stewardship project, you know, targets a certain watershed because that's where the funding is. But we're talking countywide need, not just the eastern part of the county.
For those who haven't been keeping up, actually, the mail system and some of the other medical systems have now, have now recognized the connection between high nitrate consumption and cancer. The study you'll hear referred to is the Minnesota Study. This all fits in. I would agree with you, Don. Yes, Buck?
I, see, we got $5 million for roads. I sure wish we'd upped that. Because I've had a lot of constituents say to me, I don't wanna bust an axle or bust a tire going down the road to a state-of-the-art park. You know, I mean, I would say 75, 80% of the people I talk to say their number-one concern is roads.
Yes?
I was just gonna, I've got a few notes here. And what I was gonna say is that when I talk to anybody from the town of Delmar or the city of Stanley before I can even ask the question, the first thing they say is roads. And I mean, what Buck says is exactly right, it's roads, roads, roads. Now, one other thing I wanted to talk about was the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center. And, you know, we talk about trying to leverage funds. And if we could come up with any money for the Innovation Center, I've been told, and I don't know if this is true or not, but we might have a chance of getting matching grants. And if we had a commitment from Chippewa County, we probably would get some additional help from Eau Claire. And one of the major items with the, with the Innovation Center is a newer, larger facility. And so it's just something that I think we should think about as far as the Innovation Center. And some, where we could multiply the money that we put in there between grants and Eau Claire, city of Eau Claire.
Yeah, just to give you a little history, we, the county board's already done that. They went for a grant, I can't remember the name of the grant off the top of my head.
Is it the EDA?
Yeah.
EDA grant, I believe is what it was.
Yep, good, yep. So the county board has taken action on that. Unfortunately, the grant part didn't come through, but I think it was, do you guys remember the percentage of that? That's been probably a year ago already. I don't think it was 50%. I think it was, I can't remember, but it was a significant amount of money. So, I, I mean, Craig's been, I've been dealing with Craig from regional planning. So I know they resubmitted that, but I haven't, we haven't heard anything back on that. I think the board's already on record saying that's very high priority and significant amount of money. I just don't remember what the amount was anymore. I don't remember, I can't think of anything.
But it was, I know they said that, can't remember what happened with that grant, but it had very high merit, but there was something that, where they, they didn't get it.
Yeah, the feds turned it down, whatever the reason. And then they were supposed to redo it and bring it back to us, and I never, they never, and it never came back. So I don't know what, what happened at the end of the day, but, well, I'm sorry, my memory is as good as it used to be. Yeah, it was significant. I think the board overwhelmed me with the support of trying to do that. They have something that I'm not aware of, that, you know.
No, and I can't get the, I don't have that on my.
I got out and talked to as many people as I could, too, and the number-one issue was absolutely roads. And it is internet, the number-two thing. And I guess what people are feeling is that, yes, it is getting expanded, but it's getting expanded in pockets. And I think what's happened is like what probably happened with electricity 75 years ago, where they kept going for larger customer base. And I think the rural scattered people are feeling very left out of access to broadband. Kind of what I've been hearing out there. But roads were the absolute number one.
Just for, I want to clarify, does anybody got a number? We got $5 million towards it, does anybody got a number?
I think as a board, we need to look at taking care of all of our constituents and all of the citizens of Chippewa County. And one way we can do that with this windfall of money is to take care of our critical infrastructure. And the most important piece of critical infrastructure that the county has is the county highway department's roads. So if we were to, and I mean, it takes care of every citizen because whether you're going to work or whether you're going fishing, whether you want the Amazon truck to deliver your goods, or you gotta haul your commodities to the market, or whether you need the sheriff's department to come, or God forbid, you need the ambulance. We all need a good road system. It helps our economic development along with that. So the, I think a solution would be, you take the $10 million and you bid it out per mile. Right now, it's about 225,000 per mile to pulverize, resurface, re-blacktop to 24 feet and shoulder. If we were to do that, we'd take our 22 miles of our worst roads, which are classified as a four or five, move them into the number one, number 10 category. Excuse me, I believe the worst are number fours. Move them into the 10, which is excellent. We would also be able to get another 20 miles out of our next level of roads, which is a five, and move it into a number one, a number 10. We would move about 35% of our roads to an excellent rating on the passer system. But with that, I would say that it would be bid out. That would allow the county highway department time that they need to continue doing what they're doing, doing their road maintenance, doing their ditching, doing their research, whatever they already have in queue for the next two years or three years. And it would alleviate the problem of having a project that was undone. Because when you bid it out, you would have a deadline. And now, and again, every single citizen in the county would benefit from it.
I got another one.
Well, can I just ask our Iowa commissioner? I'm hearing the same thing, roads. How would we get the biggest bang for our buck with roads?
Let's come up, Ryan.
Roads is the number-one thing I've been hearing also. Then also filling in the dead spots with broadband. But, so, yeah, would we like to take our worst to bring them up to a certain level? Or is there other things we can do to get the most years out of that money?
Yeah, first thing we plan to do is hit the threes, get all the threes paved. And that's, that makes the biggest impact to the Pacer overall rating for the county. One problem I would see with bidding it out is you have the BIL money coming up, the whatever trillion dollars it ends up being. And we have basically a monopoly at Matthew Construction in this part of the state. So they're gonna be swamped. The state's already rebidding jobs that Matthew bid this year because they've been so high. I wouldn't think we're gonna see anything differently going in the next few years with them. So the ARPA funding, we can do with our own forces, and we know that we can do more paving with our forces. We get done early every year with paving lately. And, you know, guys keep telling me we can do 20, 30 miles easily with minimal overtime. We just need the money to do it.
Would that delay other projects, though, that, you know, you had scheduled? You know, putting it in a, putting the other projects in a bad position?
No, I mean, we've done a lot of catch-up work on bridges lately. We're actually doing really well on our bridges. So some of that type of crew could transition into the construction side, road construction side. We're not gonna be doing the big reconstruct projects. We're trying to do as many miles of paving as possible. So grade crew and all their trucks become available for paving then. Still have your maintenance, county maintenance crew that can do the brushing and the patching. Yeah, in the worst case, then if you need to, you could bid out some of the crack filling and probably find some contractors to bid on it, or even the chip ceiling. There just aren't contractors, they're gonna bid on the paving besides Matthew, probably.
Did you bid some of the prep work on your paving? The grinding and the grading, that kind of stuff?
Yep. That's something I learned from Eau Claire County when they did their big bonding package a few years ago. They were bidding everything pulverized into shape, so they were just paving it. Eventually, they weren't even paving it because they didn't make their own hot mix. They were buying all paving. That's definitely an option. You know, we all have greater operators, so if we're gonna really get the paving going, we probably need some help on the prep work.
And Brian, what can you say is the average cost to do a mile? You know, paving, shouldering, you know, what do you think it would hit about?
It's, it's really tough to say this time of year with not having an oil bid. That makes all the difference in the world. We're hearing oil's gonna come in a little higher this year than last, so. Ron's probably really close with 225 if, if we do it. I know we won't find a contractor to do it for that.
That price came from a contractor. Just for your information.
For town, maybe for a town-type of road or something with an layer.
That's for a county road. It's three inches of compacted asphalt pulverizing, three inches of compacted asphalt to 24 feet, two foot of shoulder on each side, which you could go back in later if you need for more shoulder, but to keep it from breaking off.
That's, yeah, that's a town section. I mean, we're, now, four inches, but. I mean, we're, we're now four inches, but it's, could be done for that, I suppose.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you think Matthews, you know, on around, or Ron, you know somebody else that's got time to bid roads and stuff like that?
Matthews is the largest paving company in Wisconsin. Now, there are, you know, they have different entities that they bid under. But that price was just bid a week and a half ago. It was in the Western Builder for that spec. And I did verify that with the, I do know a person at Matthew, and that was the price.
Yeah, I, I know they came in higher than that up in Colburn bid a couple of weeks ago. We gave a price that we increased our oil by twenty-five percent just because we had to give them something. And, and Matthew, American Materials, Matthew was way higher than us. And the town opted to go with them because it was a sure thing on the price, and we worked for time materials, so. I think with the amount of work that the state has coming up, Matthews is gonna be pretty thin. You're gonna see some higher prices.
I was on board meeting last night, and they opened the bids, and just, just under a mile, or a half mile, and pulverizing and, you know, put the shoulders in, it was around eighty-five dollars. Said the oil was about a hundred dollars now, or it was a lot less. So he said it's definitely going up, you know. But, I don't know, that's, go away, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Supervisor Steele?
I don't know if this is possible. Every year, kind of have a policy that we borrow enough money to keep our interest rate, or our interest payment at about a million eight. Could we use some of that money, not bond? For a year, or maybe two? And at that point, we'll be saving money for years.
That's still the issue with changing how much we pay in our bonding payment. Is that's what we, that's all we offset our levy. So if we reduce that, let's say we didn't have anything, we'd have to cut one point eight million dollars worth of services. That's why we try to keep that consistent.
I understand that one.
But we'd have, we'd have to.
You have to borrow money, or you have to cut service.
Yeah, I wish, Lori, are you, can you explain that better? I think she's on the horn, on the.
She, is she muted?
Yes, Randy?
Yeah.
You guys can hear me? Okay, yes, you are right, we're saying that. Because if we don't bond for the money, then we're not gonna be able to, we're gonna have to reduce our, our tax levy by the one point eight million dollars if we didn't have any. Currently, what would really happen is if we didn't bond for the first payment in two thousand twenty-three, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have about one point six million, I think, in a bond payment, bond payments that we owe. So we would have to reduce by about two hundred thousand.
And then as that moves forward, you have to reduce your levy by more and more. You'd have to cut your service.
That's correct, each year out, yes, that, that is correct.
Well, beyond me. You have to borrow money or cut service?
Well.
Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
It's really, it's simple, it's not, it doesn't make sense, but it's simple. State sets a levy cap. The only way you can exceed this levy cap is on interest payments or loan payments or bond payments, same thing. So you borrow money, you can levy that payment outside of your levy caps. That's why we have to bond in order to do what we're doing.
And we pay for our bonding off our sales tax. That's what fees that off.
Schools do the same thing, but they come back to voters for referendum in order to exceed your levy cap.
You can't, can't take the sales tax and do something else with it.
No, because you guys chose not to. It's a policy. Sales tax can be spent on, on paying back bondings, on CIP projects, and reducing levy. Not for operation.
CIP projects. Use the sale tax money for that, and use some of this ARPA money to not bond.
You're still in the same spot. When you're not, we're not paying for that bonding amount. You're gonna, you're gonna have to reduce your levy by whatever amount, whatever the amount the bond. There's a lot of counties doing bonds for one day. They do the bond payment because they exceed levy limits because they can't operate. I mean, there are counties that are fiscally in rough shape. We have to do that. We're in pretty good fiscal shape. Yeah, there's counties in really bad fiscal shape that way. Been on it, serious levy limits for about twelve years.
Back to ARPA. Any questions on the projects and information you've seen here? I would have ran the broadbanning with what we have above. What, what percentage are we covering as a county? What do we, do we have an idea of that?
No, there's, I mean, there's, there's obviously broadband before this. I mean, there's a map we can pull up and show you exactly what it is.
Be kind of nice to know where, where we're at if we're forty percent, fifty, sixty percent.
Okay. The hard part's, yeah, I can, I'll work with our GIS people. We can implement the ones that are, aren't out there yet, because you can go on the website and see what's currently out there. The hard part is it's, it's hard to read sometimes because they'll claim that there's coverage in areas that there isn't coverage. And they'll claim that there's multiple, multiple vendors in areas that don't have multiple vendors. So it's, yeah, so, but we can show what, what they have out there. I could have that for next week.
That would be good.
Sounds like a hot topic.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Well, anything else from the board? Again, this is brainstorming, so there are no wrong answers.
Is any of the county equipment, whether it be end loaders or trucks or whatever, is that eligible or is that not eligible?
Uh, it's probably eligible. I think it's a county expense, county service. Um, probably the, you got anything in particular?
I'm thinking of updating fleets of that. And I'm thinking, Town events and, he's talking about an end loader that's gonna cost them almost all of their ARPA.
Oh, yeah, really good question. I haven't had that one, which is surprising. Let's say revenue loss would have to be a service, but it's something they spend levy to. So if they, yeah, so if they've spent levy towards that in the past, I would say, yeah, it'd be, it'd be eligible.
He's asking us.
What's that?
Use it, didn't you use them as an example, but you would like to see the county do that? I have no idea what, what shape the fleet is in, so I'm not proposing anything, I was just curious.
Can you submit new projects still?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is, this is, this is just what the department heads have submitted under requirements that you want. Or in step three of seven, yep. So, yep, absolutely, whatever. And we're gonna meet next Tuesday if that's still the plan. And if you got something, you know, for that, we'll talk about that. I'll, I will bring that map, it sounds like, like I said, a pretty hot topic.
Randy, we get through all this, are we gonna go through this line by line and vote on each item as to how we do this?
Yeah, so my plan was to get everybody's input and put up, like I do with CIP, bring a planned board, draft plan. You guys would be able to change that draft plan, whatever, however you want to change, take things off, put things in. We could have the list of things that's been submitted, so you have a, you know, overall plan. And then I'd have to bring the final plan, I think it's July or something like that. Yeah, you guys could definitely, it's your plan at the end of the day. So I would, I'd bring my recommendations, saying this is what I feel, what I've heard, and.
So at some point, at some point, are you planning that we will step through each item and bring it forward and discuss it?
Yeah, yeah. And remember, the final plan actually has to be a resolution for each one. So at, at the end, at the very end, you guys will vote on each individual project if you want that one forward or not.
Are there smaller municipalities sending there is in, or is this involving Chippewa County one also? Like Colburn, Stanley? Do they do their individually projects, or do they put them under the county?
No, they're all on their own. They're actually going through the state. So, one of the nuances to this is WCA and NACO wanted us to get money directly, county. I'd say Lori probably ain't real happy with that. I mean, it's bringing a lot of complexity into our requirements, learning the system. Kind of some of the things I talked about in the backside of that, too, reporting and figuring out what you have to report. The municipalities are working through the state. You know, however they want them to report back to the state, so it's a little different. And I think most municipalities are doing roads or broadband. They don't really spend a lot of money on anything else, you know, that's their main purposes. But they're all separate from it. They could give us the money if they choose. That is one of the things they're allowed to do.
I thought it was going back to the state, not back to the county.
Well, they can, they, they would if they didn't use it. They could, they felt like it, they could give us the money.
Yeah, that'll happen.
Yeah, I don't, I'm holding my breath.
Anything else?
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Okay, agenda item, future consideration, we do meet next Tuesday. Lots of ideas out there, but get them. Other than that, I will seek a motion to adjourn. Adjourn, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.